Good afternoon to the members of the New York Medical College family and welcome to our town hall meeting for the fall semester. The theme for today's meeting is what's new? Our team members are going to tell you what is new in relationship to our new partnership with the Lovelace Biomedical Research Institute of Albuquerque, New Mexico. They're going to tell you what's new with clinical chair recruitments, what's new with biomedical science faculty recruits, what's new with our buildings and grounds and construction, what's new in the School of Health Sciences and Practice, what's new in relation to what our new medical and dental school classes look like, what's new in relationship to campus management of the pandemic, and you're going to meet two new members of the team, Jennifer Salsedo and Regina Williams. If you've been reading all of our campus newsletters and in touch, you will have read about all of these initiatives, but I thought it was a good idea for you to hear all about what's new face to face. Our COVID vaccination rates have been excellent on our campus, but as we all recognize, while high vaccination rates and our vigorous campus social distancing, masking, and screening saliva testing have kept us out of hospitals and ICUs, they have not kept many of us, including me, from having sore throats, fever, and fatigue from outpatient COVID-19 infections. In face however of a worldwide pandemic, I think we can all be grateful for how relatively well the campus community has fared. Really never in human history has a new infectious disease been identified and with such speed, a new vaccine developed and put into clinical use with such rapidity and success. Our campus has benefited from the heroic work of Dr. Omar, Amler, Contreras, Montcalvo, Solomon, and Ms. Bordinaro, among many others. They've all helped keep us safe and I'm sure we're all very grateful. Since our last town hall, it's been a continued period of political and social turmoil in the United States and abroad. I'm often contacted by members of the campus community with requests that I issue a public statement on some topic in the news, or I'm criticized because I didn't issue a public statement on some topic in the news. It has and it remains my opinion that as private citizens, each of us is entitled to our opinions on the issues of the day. In my capacity as an officer of the college however, I ought only be issuing statements on matters which clearly do or might affect the campus community. In that context, I want to reiterate things I've already said publicly on two topics, but that are on my mind. First, the US Supreme Court has recently issued a ruling which overturned longstanding judicial precedent on women's reproductive health. Like you, I can read, and I know what the Supreme Court did. Now here's what we're going to do. Our curricula will remain unchanged. We will continue to teach our students and our trainees about the full range of options for women's reproductive health. We will continue to respect the dignity and agency of every patient to make informed decisions about the healthcare they elect to receive for themselves. Second, disgraceful acts of discrimination, sometimes accompanied by violence, continue to besmirch the American experience. A few months ago, the college archivist, Mr. Nicholas Webb, discovered a 1925 fundraising solicitation from New York Medical College. The solicitation asked for donations so that our college can quote, "Select our student body without prejudice to race, creed, or color, so that each one admitted will reflect credit upon our profession," close quote. That's a pretty extraordinary thing though, said in 1925, and we should all be very proud of that. And this college has been and remains a bastion against bigotry in health science education. Everyone is welcome here. And as we say back home in North Carolina, y'all means everyone. Race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, primary language spoken at hall at home, if you're interested in the generation conservation and dissemination of knowledge about the causes prevention and treatment of human and animal disease and disability, then everyone is welcome here. The long arc of human history bends towards justice. Sometimes the slope of that arc's angle is longer than we would wish, but as the Old Testament instructs us, "Justice, justice ye shall pursue." And we shall. If you have a question for our speakers today, please go ahead and type it into the question box on your computer, and we'll get to as many as we can during the Q and A part of our program. Thanks for joining us and let's get started with our town hall meeting.
Hello, my name is Solomon Amar. I'm the Vice President for Research at New York Medical College and the Senior Vice President of Biomedical Research at Turow University. I'm pleased to provide you with an update on a new affiliate that has joined the Turow University family and New York Medical College as a sister affiliation, Lovelace Biomedical Research Institute. Lovelace Biomedical Research Institute is a facility located in Albuquerque, New Mexico with 500,000 square feet that you can see on this screen, specifically devoted on biomedical research. It's an institution that is 75-year-old, created by William Randolph Lovelace, number one, in 1902, that had illustrated itself over the years at numerous occasions. President Roosevelt presented the Robert Collier Trophy in 1940 for the implementation of the BLB oxygen mask. This institution has had a long history of biomedical research over the years. And up until recently, when in 1990 Jacqueline Lovelace, the daughter of Randy and Mary Lovelace, was appointed the Chairman of the Board of Director, and headed by Robert Rubin, that has presented to this group at numerous occasions. The institution is now well-funded, moving into the next century for developing state-of-the-art, up-to-date research in the area of pulmonary function, pulmonary disease, infectious disease, as well as diabetes and chronic disease. There's an interesting institution that they have created at Lovelace Biomedical Research Institute, is the Institute for Imaging MRI, that is devoted into determining and developing strategy by preventing essentially traumatic brain injury with subtraction MRI. To present, this is an innovative company addressing challenging national problem. They developed themselves into a major institution at the time of the COVID-19 pandemic. We've developed also a strong collaboration even before the affiliation. It explores essentially lung biology and respiratory disease, discovering the new therapy, prevention, optimizing research to provide quality service, investigating environmental toxicology, as well as the high-quality clinical trial performance. It has about 811 employees with 250 clients. The budget of that institution was $80 million in 2021 in revenue. As we said, it has 500,000 square feet of facility, and about 29,000 to 30,000-person base network for clinical research population base. One of the characteristics of this LBRI facility is one of the largest private nonprofit research organization in the nation, conducting basic and applied research and testing. LBRI applies a range of research and scientific capabilities to government, industry, health organization to find innovative solution to research challenge. I don't know any biotech or industry that is ready to go to the FDA that has not made a stop at Lovelace Biomedical Research Institute for their pre-clinical testing. Lovelace worked with NIH, DOD, BARDA, FDA, and industry along many other universities. It's focused essentially into translational research that produced direct improvement to public health. What is unique in Lovelace and has capabilities and its capabilities and facility, it has a very large BL3 facility, so they have emerged as a major testing for COVID-19. It has a large and a small animal testing and housing facility in research MRI, MAG, as well as mobile MRI facility with machine learning and neuroscience professionals. It has a unique aerosol science, which is now being implemented for developing the next generation of vaccine, and especially in COVID-19 with inhalation facility. You will see a new paper that New York Medical College scientists and Lovelace have collaborated in regard to aerosol and inhalation for COVID-19. It has a large clinical cohort in brain disease, EOPD, smoking, and diabetes, the state-of-the-art GLP infrastructure for drug development, extremely attractive for biotech companies coming to develop their product, and over 100 animal models, as I said, for human disease. We plan on leveraging with the creation of a clinical trial unit, as you know, in Skyline. We plan to leverage their LBRI clinical trial infrastructure, using them as an administrative unit to being able to act as a CRO for running and administering the clinical trials that are going to be administered in Skyline. This will coordinate and standardize the operation to make it more efficient for developing important research and making sure consistency for consistency, efficiency, and regulatory compliance. As you know, the regulatory compliance for clinical research is ever-increasing. What are the programs that we have between New York Medical College already in place? It's a joint Lovelace New York Medical College fellow. It emerged from the fact that Lovelace has always had a need for technical expertise in a number of areas. Needs MD advisors for the clinical trial research, as well as basic science support. And accordingly, already in '21 and '22, before the affiliation, three faculty at New York Medical College were named as Lovelace Fellows for their expertise, and they have provided significant basic science as well as clinical support. The role of those fellows is to provide advice and support for individual research project at Lovelace, and for joint project between the two entities, but most importantly is to plant the seed for large projects where fellows collaborate with Lovelace scientists to develop new research grant and contract. The '22, '23 fellows that are about to be appointed, and you'll hear more about that. There is a joint seed funding between the two institutions that's been in place. You may have seen, I'm sure that you have seen, if you haven't seen the call for application, please let me know. Both institutions provide funding for seed internal grants that will promote research collaboration between the two institutions. The emphasis is placed on projects that have a strong potential to turn into external funding applications. And the program has started last August and is now accepting application for funding in January 2023. So the future is extremely bright. I'm extremely proud of bringing this to you and to your information for you to engage Lovelace Biomedical. They will engage you in exchange. It's extremely gratifying to see that an institution like that is joining and being affiliated to the Turow University, and mostly with New York Medical College, where New York Medical College would leverage on that institution, on the human resource expertise that they have, as well as in the equipment that Lovelace Research Institute has currently. Thank you very much. If anyone needs any more information, please do not hesitate to call me or email me. Thank you again, and have a wonderful day.
Hello, this is Rob Amler. My topic today is directed to clinicians in our midst, especially those who care for infants, children, adolescents, and young adults. Let's say you have a patient with unusual symptoms that seem to be some kind of syndrome or complex. After you run through the usual etiologies, you find nothing that stands out. So you begin to suspect something in the patient's environment, either at home, in school, on an athletic field, or whatever. So now you can call the referral service based in the Pediatric Pulmonary Division at Boston Children's Health Physicians. We now have a pediatric environmental medicine service that can conduct telehealth visits, preferably with the patient in their own home, and will do a very thorough environmental workup that includes looking at their bedroom, their basement, furnaces, HVAC, backyard exposures, even lead in the cookingware. We also will connect when needed with the local health department, the building department, and other government sources of information to get to the bottom of the problem. And let's face it, this is a lot more work than an office-based clinician typically has time to track all those details down. This environmental medicine service will gladly do it for you. You can contact the service in Pediatric Pulmonary at 593-8800. Dr. Krishnan, Dr. Amy Brown, Dr. Amy Ansell, and yours truly, will be glad to help you out. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Marina Holes. I am the Dean of the Graduate School of Biomedical Sciences, interim Chair of the Department of Biochemistry and Molecular Biology, and Professor of Cell Biology and Anatomy. There are excellent things happening here at New York Medical College. As you know, the Graduate School recently became the Graduate School of Biomedical Sciences, and the other exciting thing is that we welcome four new faculty over the summer, and I'm very excited to introduce them. As you know, I spoke about their arrival at the last town hall, but now they're here, and I'm really excited to introduce them to you in no particular order, and I really hope that you'll get to know them and forge new collaborations in research, teaching, and include them in our community. So first faculty member I would like to tell you about is Dr. Shwagao. He is studying drug resistance in prostate cancer, and his research program is really exciting. He was recently awarded an award from the Department of Defense, which is given to new investigators. It's an idea development award. And what he's focusing on is prostate cancer, which although treatable, often develops drug resistance, and for those patients who develop drug resistance, there's poor clinical outcome. And what he's focusing on is what tumor cells do to avoid being killed by the chemotherapy treatment, which is they change their identity, they escape the immunotherapies, and they become more invasive. Dr. Gao focuses on the molecular events inside the cells, specifically inside the nuclear, to really figure out how cancer cells change and adapt their gene expression programs in response to drug treatment. So to show you briefly what he's planning to do here in his first few years here at New York Medical College, he's focusing on chromatin biology, especially on transcription factors, histone modifiers, and DNA modifiers, to really find out what is happening at the chromatin level, what is the molecular composition of different complexes, how do transcription factors talk to epigenetic modifiers, and how to really target this cross-talk. And as you can see, his work is very translational. He focuses on cell lines, model organisms, as well as patients, and hoping to translate his discoveries into clinical approaches in the clinic. So again, he's really awesome, really collaborative. I already spoke to him several times about his research, and I've seen him in the classroom. So make sure you say hello to Dr. Shwagao. The next faculty member is Dr. Malik Bissiria. He has a joint appointment in cell biology and anatomy, as well as in physiology, and he's also an outstanding young investigator and was recently awarded a KO1 grant from the NIH, which is a mentor research award. His area is molecular postgenesis of pulmonary arterial hypertension. So PAH is a rare disease, but it doesn't have very good treatment strategies, and the survival prognosis is really bleak here. So the exact cause is unknown, and there is no cure, but the Bissiria lab is up and rubbing to study the molecular mechanisms of PAH. And as you can see, he is targeting this disease from multiple molecular and cellular approaches. And just to tell you a little bit more about his exact research program, he's focusing very similar to Dr. Gao on the transcriptional and epigenetic alterations. So hopefully there is some synergy between these two labs to identify disease vulnerability, predisposing factors, and also very translational to develop personalized therapies such as gene therapy. So again, this work goes from patients to the bench and back to the clinic, and I hope that you'll be able to say hello to Dr. Bissiria and talk about potential collaborations. Our third faculty member who's joining us is Dr. Jean Lee. He is appointed in the Department of Cell Biology and Anatomy. He is also recipient of a major award from the NIH, Maximizing Investigator's Research Award, or MIRA grant, which, as you know, is one of the recent mechanisms by NIGMS to support investigators. His work is really interesting, focusing on proteostasis, which is a cellular mechanism that is responsible for many diseases, disorders, including aging. So he's focusing on protein folding and the role of specific factor called HSF1 in its activity in aging and coordinating the processes of protein folding from native confirmation to misfolded to aggregated protein. And as you can see, there are several aspects of this. One of them is female reproductive aging and also biology. And just to give you a few slides about what he's planning to do here in his next few years here at New York Medical College, is to study how HSF1 promotes abnormal cancer proliferation and contributes to mitochondrial biogenesis, and he's using multiomics approaches to look at proteomics, metabolomics, single-cell sequencing, to really tackle this very interesting question. And again, Dr. Jean Lee is very collaborative and super friendly, and I welcome you to come talk to him. And last but not least is Dr. Julie DiMartino. She is appointed in the Department of Cell Biology and Anatomy. She is also a grant recipient. Her work focuses on studying metastasis and dissemination, specifically in breast cancer. And for that work, she received an award from the Metta Viver Foundation, which is an early career award. I apologize for the type on the slide, that's mine. And as you know, the problem with breast cancer is that it is a metastatic disease, and that is the metastasis that kills the patient. So understanding how cancers metastasize, how they evolve from being a non-aggressive, non-invasive cancer, from dormancy to metastasis and reactivation is very important, and she is studying those mechanisms in great detail. Her specialty is imaging. So in addition to understanding the mechanisms of dormancy and transition to metastasis, she uses very high-end, elegant microscopy-based approaches, and you can also see that these techniques are very, very translational, and they range from pre-clinical approaches to studies in animals and other model organisms, such as OVA, as well as studying metastasis in patients. And this work will contribute to our understanding of breast cancer metastasis, and hopefully how to prevent it. So again, give a virtual round of applause to these four outstanding faculty members. We're exceptionally excited to welcome them here, and I hope that they will be productive in all of their research endeavors. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ron Matten. I'm the AVP for Facilities and Capital Planning here at New York Medical College, and welcome to the 2022-23 Capital Construction Projects Presentation. I've divided our presentation into major construction projects, where we are employed as construction manager to supervise trades, and minor construction projects, where the facility staff is managing the trades. Our major projects are divided into the BSP Laboratories and Associated Spaces, the Energy Performance Contract, the Konikov Learning Center, Phase Two of Disaster Medicine, and the Clinical Skills Expansion. Not counting the Energy Contract, this represents nearly 45,000 square feet of construction The Basic Science Building was built in 1972 to accommodate New York Medical College move from Flower Fifth Avenue Hospital to our current Valhalla campus. The building was last refreshed in 2001, when the Medical Education Center was built. We are renovating 35,050 square feet of laboratory space and associated spaces, which represents about 20% of the building. Some progress photos demonstrate where we are in the project. The carpenters have been in and are framing out the petition wall, and the electricians are completely rewiring the laboratories to accommodate the new equipment. The plumbers are in now, and here they are trenching some drains for the new drain lines. And you can see the carpenters have closed up the walls. I'm expecting the laboratory case work to start arriving in mid-October, and I'm expecting to start turning over labs by the end of the calendar year. Another major project has been the Energy Performance Contract. Within the Energy Performance Contract, we have the interior and exterior lighting controls, computerized energy control, sealing up the dress within the building envelope, replacements of toilets and sink for domestic water savings, adding a summer boiler to Seven Dana Road, the heat recovery system which will allow the latent heat from the exhausting air to heat the incoming air, retrocommissioning laboratory configurations, reconfiguring the transformers to allow for additional power savings, and mechanical insulation. We are estimated to save about $800,000 in utility savings, including giving us a better At 19 Skyline, we're beginning rebuilding the Konikov Learning Center, which will be situated on the fourth floor in room 465. The center will allow 90 students to learn, as large groups can either learn together or break into smaller groups. The construction manager is on board, and the kickoff meeting will happen shortly. Phase Two of Disaster Medicine will add 1,600 square feet to the disaster medicine suite. The plans are being revised as we look into gaining greater efficiency in this next step of the building. The Clinical Skills Expansion will add 10,000 square feet to the Clinical Skills Program. We have currently completed the architecturals and the mechanical drawings, and now we're working with a professional cost estimator to see how much money we need to raise. Facility is also managing some smaller, but no less important projects. We will expand, we have expanded SHSP one eleven and one twelve into a single learning space to accommodate a larger class audience. We will be paving the front drive of Nineteen Skyline, which is this picture that you see now. Work is expected to start at the end of October and will need your cooperation with parking during the paving process. The air conditioning is being replaced at the south side of the ground floor of Nineteen Skyline. Our engineer is currently designing the specifications to meet the needs. And in October, we will begin working on the foundation waterproofing at Sunshine Cottage. This phase will begin with the northeast area of the building, and it will involve excavating the complete foundation and applying a waterproof coating. I thank you for your time today, and that's the end of our presentation.
Good afternoon. I'm Marissa Montecalvo. I'm the Medical Director of New York Medical College Health Services. And I just want to give you a brief update on COVID flu and a few words about monkeypox. So our website is listed here at the bottom. Everything that I'm presenting is available on our website, and I hope you'll take the time to take a look and use that as a resource as well. So starting with SARS-CoV-2, there is a new booster available. It's the bivalent booster, which has the ancestral strain plus targeted for Omicron. And on August thirty-first, the FDA approved this for use for all people who have received primary vaccination irrespective of how many boosters you've received previously. Anyone twelve years of age and older is to receive a bivalent booster this year in preparation for winter, at least two months after your last dose. So again, this booster is strongly advised for everyone who has completed primary vaccination two months later. It is the only booster available. You can't receive the prior vaccine as a booster any longer. The prior vaccine is being used for primary vaccination. This bivalent vaccine cannot be used for that purpose. Want to say a few words about face masks. We modified the face mask policy. Our university has over ninety-nine percent of people here are vaccinated and received a booster last winter-spring. So that combined with rates going down, we were able to modify the policy. Face masks are required anywhere healthcare is delivered, which is the third floor of the Skyline Building here in Health Services. And we also require it in simulated patient care settings and also in the anatomy lab. In accordance with New York State regs, you are to wear a face mask for ten days after you've been diagnosed with SARS-CoV-2. So even for the period when you're off isolation and after exposure, and certainly if you suspect that you may have it. And anyone who is exempt from vaccination is to wear a face mask. Recommendations are, you know, really common sense things. You know, if you're in a crowded area, if you're in a lecture hall, obviously if you're immunosuppressed, we would hope, we would recommend that you continue to wear face masks. They really do work and they're an important barrier to infection. So the essentials for SARS-CoV-2 for this year are get that bivalent booster. Please do not come in if you don't feel well, please call us. We will work with your supervisor or with your academic supervisor for excused absences. And if you're positive, please let us know. We will let you know exactly what needs to be done. And again, all of this is on our website. Few words about flu. Flu is still important. Please don't forget about flu. We want everyone to get a flu shot and we offer it at no charge for students. We have the quadrivalent vaccine. We'll be offering flu clinics over in the Basic Science Building. And we're looking forward to working jointly with the Family Health Center, who has the bivalent vaccine. So to have clinics where both the bivalent vaccine and the flu vaccine can be offered, there's no contraindication to receiving both on the same day. And lastly, just a few words about monkeypox. I know you've heard about this. This is a viral illness, which besides the rash, can really make you sick with fever, chills, swollen lymph nodes. It is predominantly spread by close skin-to-skin contact with and contact with the rash or with body fluids of someone who has this infection. Currently, it is an outbreak that is occurring predominantly in the community of men who have sex with men, but not solely. And if you think that you're at risk, there are quite a few resources available. There is a vaccine readily available at the County Department of Health as well as the Medical Center. And there is also antiviral treatment. We have an area on our website about this. I hope you'll take the opportunity to take a look. So in closing, I just want to say that we're, it's great to have everybody back and everyone in Health Services wants to wish you a very safe and healthy year. Thanks very much. I look forward to your questions.
Hello, my name is Karen Murray and I'm the Associate Dean of Admissions for the School of Medicine here at New York Medical College. Today, I'm just going to give you a quick overview of our previous cycle, our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two cycle, which was a virtual cycle for the admissions. We had approximately twelve thousand applicants, which was a slight decrease from our previous cycle, which was our all-time high of over fifteen thousand applicants. Over twelve thousand applicants, we invited about twelve hundred for interview, and we had approximately a thousand who interviewed with us. The interview cycle is from September through March, and it ends with the start of the M1 classes, July twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-two. Our virtual MMI platform is what we use for this past cycle and it's what we're going to be using for the current cycle that just started. We will continue to have our two circuits with nine applicants per circuit. The day starts with the morning orientation. During orientation, the applicants get to hear from Dr. Halpern, Dr. Nadler, and Dr. ATN. They also have a student panel, which happens around midday. And then slightly after midday starting probably around one o'clock or so, they start their interview sessions with the MMI interviewers. The portal that we're using is the Profit HR Portal. It's a wonderful portal for the virtual MMI in that once the portal, once the session starts, the portal really runs itself. So the applicant and the interviewer really just have to sit and speak with each other. Our virtual, for the virtual portal, the MMI interviewers have multiple training sessions. They have group training sessions, they have individual training sessions, they had some mock MMIs to get them used to the portal, as well as to help them kind of work through any issues they may have. We do have daily briefing sessions for the interviewers. And at these briefing sessions, we can talk about any updates to the portal as well. Once the applicants have finished their interviews, their application packets and their interview packets is put together and it's given to the admissions committee members. Our admissions committee had twenty-five members last year, and we met twice a month over Zoom to discuss the applicants and this and make a decision as to whether to accept an applicant into our school. All accepted applicants were offered an on-campus tour. We had groups of ten to twelve. The applicants needed to be fully vaccinated to be on campus. They also had to comply with our on-campus survey. And this was going really well. It started, the day starts about eleven-thirty. They met with Dr. Nadler, who's the dean of the School of Medicine. And after meeting with Dr. Nadler, they were split in two groups. One group would have lunch with our students and the second group would go on a tour, and then they would flip halfway between. We did have to take a four-week pause towards the end of December into early January, when there was a second wave of COVID that occurred in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two. So an overview of the cycle is over twelve thousand applications, about twelve hundred interviews invited for interviews, about a thousand interviews. We accepted six hundred and seventy-six applicants to fill a class of two hundred and fourteen, which gave us a yield of thirty-two percent. Here is a brief synopsis of the demographics of the class over the last four years. As you can see, the numbers have basically remained the same. We have a slight uptake in New Yorkers at fifty-nine percent. And for the first time, we have a dip in women to forty-nine percent. The number of underrepresented is eighteen percent, and the number of New York Medical grads, alumni, and faculty have basically remained the same. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three cycle opened on July first of this year, and so far we have approximately ten thousand applications. This will again be a virtual cycle, and we're hoping to follow the same format we did last year by inviting or accepted students to come in for virtual, for a tour and meeting with our dean and students. Interviews for this new cycle start on September fifteenth. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ronnie Myers and I'm the dean of the Toro College of Dental Medicine. And I'd like to speak today for a few minutes on the admissions process for the class of two thousand twenty-six. And we are the seventh entering class for the college, which started in two thousand and sixteen. And we were at that time the sixty-sixth dental school in the country. Now there are sixty-seven. And since two thousand and eleven, nine new schools have opened. And there are seven new schools in the pipeline, which obviously will increase the number of students matriculating to dental education. Here we have a picture from our very first class in two thousand twenty and our class of two thousand twenty-six, which arrived on campus on July fifth. Just to give you a broad spectrum of the national landscape, the applicant pool for dental education, which reached a peak in two thousand and seven, is now slightly decreased over the course of the last thirteen or fifteen years. And we're now at about ten and a half or eleven thousand applicants to dental school. And with the number of new schools opening, the number of matriculated students is greater. And so these are converging lines as far as the applicant pool to matriculated students is concerned. There are less applicants for more spaces right now. The ratio is about one point seven applicants to every space available. And as I believe in the next few years, as more schools open, that will decrease probably to somewhere in the neighborhood of one point four, let's say, applicants to matriculated spots. The gender ratio has changed in dentistry, just as it is in most health professions. As you can see, back in two thousand, the ratio was somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, seventy percent males to thirty percent females. And now it's actually reversed and it's about sixty percent females to forty percent males. And the historically underrepresented in dentistry has also changed slightly in some areas and not at all in others. The Hispanic Latino population has increased significantly. The Black or African-American population has increased, but only slightly. And the Native American and Hawaiian population has remained flat. Areas which need direct intervention across the country to help improve the access to care issues. If we look closely at the new TCDM applicant pool versus the admitted, we noticed that the national applicant pool is about ten and a half thousand. We admitted about twenty-five hundred. So one in four applicants to dental school is actually applying to TCDM. And the average number of schools that an applicant applies to is about ten. Nationally, the applicant pool last year was down about six percent. But TCDM continues on the upward slope of increasing the number of applicants who apply to the college. If we look at our matriculated class, they come from twelve different states. We have eight international students, four from Canada, two from South Korea, and two from China. The ratio of men to women, as can seen here, is about fifty-five percent female, forty-five percent male. And if we look at the underrepresented class, we do are now about twelve percent. We fluctuated last year about the same. And if we look at the breakdown between Hispanic, Black, American Indian, and Hawaiian, we notice that there are changes. And the biggest change is certainly in the Black African-American for the class of two thousand twenty-six. We matriculated our class on January fifth. Our DAT average, which is the national exam for entry into dental school, it was twenty-one point four out of thirty, which was sixth for all privates and second in New York State. Our grade point average was three point five three and our percent yield, meaning those that were accepted and those that actually accepted us, was twenty-six percent. And we have pictures here of our orientation and the happy young individuals who are now the class of two thousand twenty-six. And I thank you for your attention.
Hello, I am Jerry Navarro, the dean of the School of Medicine, and I'm very excited to be part of this town hall. I want to first acknowledge all of the efforts of the School of Medicine deans, the course leaders, the faculty, as well as staff in helping each class get off to a wonderful start this academic year. In particular, it's a very exciting time. We're rolling out a new curriculum, integrated curriculum in the School of Medicine. And there are many people to thank for that effort, including Dr. Ludmer, as well as Dr. Kessler. It's really nice to be back in person too, and I'm sure all of our students and everyone's excited about that. Now, I was specifically asked to update you all on two major department searches that are currently underway in the School of Medicine. But I also want to mention, it's a very exciting time as we are preparing our major self-study for the LCME site visit, which is going to occur in twenty-twenty-four. This is a major effort, and in advance, I want to thank our deans, our faculty, staff, and also the students who are really participating in this holistic effort. Now the two searches. The Surgery Chair and Service Chief Physician at Westchester Medical Center is a major position. This search has been led by Dr. Panzika, are currently our Chair of Anesthesia. The Search Committee has done a wonderful job working with the search firm. We've identified a number of outstanding candidates, and we are now looking at the candidates and bringing candidates on campus. Hopefully in the next coming months, we will have a decision with a finalist for this very important position. So that search is going very well. The other search that we're just initiating is a search for the Pediatric Chair and also Director Pediatrics at the Children's Hospital. This is a very important search, given that Dr. Lenny Newman is retiring and Dr. Michael Gewitz is retiring. So it's going to be a real challenge to identify the appropriate person to oversee these important roles. I'm very excited to say that Dr. Mo Chowdhury, our Chair of the Urology Department, is heading up this search. The Search Committee has already been formed, and the search firm is already engaged. The physician description is about ready to be released, and candidates are already starting to be interviewed. And we're hoping by next month, we'll have candidates presented to the Search Committee. So this search is well underway, and I'm very optimistic we will also obtain wonderful candidates for this search as well. So I wanted to thank everyone for all their efforts. It's an exciting time here at New York Medical College in the School of Medicine, and I'm very proud and excited to serve as your dean. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Salcedo, and I joined New York Medical College on August first as the designated institutional official to support and oversee the college's twenty-two sponsored residency and fellowship programs. I'm an obstetrician-gynecologist who focuses on complex family planning and pediatric and adolescent gynecology. My academic interests are in health systems research and innovative models of residency training delivery. Most recently, I'm coming to you from the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, where I was the Residency Program Director for the Standard Training Track in OB-GYN, as well as its Border and Under-Served Leadership Development Track. I look forward to working with the New York Medical College community to continue advancing the cohesiveness of its GME programs and further the college's mission of excellence in scholarship and inclusion. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Regina Williams. I am the Director of Human Resources for NYMC. Hello, my name is Regina Williams. I am the Director of Human Resources for NYMC. I began my role August first of this year. I have been a human resources practitioner for nearly thirty years with the designation of Senior Certified Professional from the Society of Human Resources Management, which is the Recognized Professional Membership Association. Much of my experience has been in the public sector, specifically K through twelve education. I received my bachelor's degree from the University of Connecticut in stores, and I earned my master's degree also from the University of Connecticut School of Business in Hartford, Connecticut. Effective and sound human resources practices are built upon a platform of both technical and strategic approaches. One, to ensure that our human resources transactions are in full compliance with all mandated state and federal regulations. For example, this includes activities such as provided annual mandated trainings for our staff and complying with record retention requirements. And there are many, many more. The most effective and efficient means of meeting these requirements is by utilizing best practices. Second, I will be strategizing with the HR team. We will develop departmental goals in support of the organization. In addition, I look forward to partnering with leadership as HR plays a critical role supporting our colleagues in all areas of the college as they strive to meet their individual and departmental goals. I look forward to working with organizational stakeholders in evaluating challenges and identifying opportunities for change. As a new member of the institution, one of my initial objectives is to expand my knowledge to better understand the college's operations. As an HR professional, I understand and embrace the importance of client services. HR has been and will continue to provide relevant and effective services to our faculty, staff, leaders, and other members of the community. As valued members of the organization, the HR team engages with the employee community on many different levels. We will strive to have a meaningful impact on our employees by assuring a positive experience for all. We will implement initiatives to support and refine our service delivery model. For example, HR will begin using a platform that will help organize workflows, allowing us to enhance our responses to employee inquiries. My hope and vision is that after employees interact with human resources, they're left with a positive impression and confidence that their needs have been met. I look forward to building upon the exemplary work that has been done. Should anybody be interested in visiting the department or want to engage in a conversation, please feel free to reach out to me directly or any other member of the HR team. I am thrilled to be a part of your community here at NYMC. Thank you.